I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Monona for Monday, December 16, 2013. Would the city administrator please call the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would the backup city clerk, Leah Kimmel, please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Thomas? Alder Bussie?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Alder O'Connor?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the December 2 meeting?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Discussion, corrections, deletions. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Minutes have been approved. There is no one here this evening for the public appearances section. There is no public hearing this evening. There is no consent agenda this evening. Under item G, council action items, under unfinished business, item 1A, which is consideration of resolution 13-12-1951, adopting future compensation increases for the mayor and city council members of the city of Monona, brought forth by Alders Wood and Alder O'Connor. Is there a motion for approval?
Some word.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Alder Wood?
Yeah, I don't have really anything much to add from what I had said the last time. Basically, this has been since 1995, the last time there was an increase in either the mayor's or city council compensation, and it's were below average even for cities smaller than ours. The other thing is the compensation cannot take place until a member has been reelected, and because you can't implement it after December 1st, it won't go, this would not go into effect until the 2015, after the 2015 spring election.
Further discussion. Alder Holmquist?
So, the one question I had, and I voiced it to Alder Wood, was the idea of looking at other alternative ways when we had a spreadsheet that indicated some other municipalities and the way they compensate their elected officials. I wanted us to consider if we wanted to do it straight, straight compensation dollar value, or to look at other potential options, such as some communities do it a base and then do it based on appointment and number of meetings beyond that. I just wanted to get other people's opinions on that.
Discussion? Alder Wood?
Oh, also what else wants to?
Alder, straight?
Well, I'd be open to that, though. I, you know, how complicated is schemes and...
That was my, one of my primary concerns about it was that the administrative cost of keeping track of attendance at meetings and having different, the checks would be for different amounts, or, that was one concern. I guess the other concern, thought was that everybody, we all bring our different own strengths to the table and have different ways of doing the duties, and it's sort of up to the voters whether the job that we're doing is good enough and not based on how many meetings we've attended, but I don't have a huge objection to it. I just, I think a straight, you know, salary is simpler.
And just for the viewers, just so they get a feel, in case somebody wasn't tuning in, could you just review what those current salaries are and what that compensation would rise to?
Sure. For the mayor, it's currently $4,800 per year. That is actually slightly under half of the average compensation for part-time mayors in Wisconsin cities. The current compensation, and the compensation for mayor would rise to $7,800, so it'd still actually be below the average. Compensation for Alders is currently $3,000 per year, which again is below average. It's about 75 percent of the average. The proposal would increase that to $4,800 per year.
And this is staged, as you've explained, by the, you can't elect, you can't vote in a raise while you're currently in office by an individual, so can you review when this would, how this would stagger in place?
Sure. It can't, it would go into effect beginning with the spring election in 2015, which would be, the mayor and three Alders would be up, so the mayor and three Alders who were elected at that time, that would then get the increased compensation for the final eight months of 2015. Then the second phase would be after the spring election in 2016, when the other three Alders elected at that election would see the increase in compensation.
Thank you. So, the point being is there's no impact on taxes. The earliest impact on city budgets would be in April of 2015, so a long ways off, and a lot of things can happen, so. Further discussion? Welcome, Alder Thomas.
Thank you.
Do you have a food plate or anything?
In my car.
Anything else? Anything you wanted to add, Alder Holmquist?
I'm satisfied with that, in the sense of even if there's additional information gathered and there's a concern later on, if this was adopted, it's not something that couldn't be amended later.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Would the assistant clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Motion approves unanimously. Thank you very much, Alder Wood, for taking the time to do that research. There is no new business this evening. There are just no miscellaneous, unless somebody has some miscellaneous business they'd like to bring forth. Hearing none. Then we have our reports section, and tonight we have the presentation of the draft strategic plan. Just to review, a year ago, we budgeted to do a strategic plan to try to improve how the city operates, how the city communicates with its staff and coworkers, how public officials better represent the will of the constituents, and the ability for the citizens to fight, in terms of how they would like to see their, our roadmap to their roadmap to the future. So, we retained the services of Reinvention Consultants, Walter Jankowski, and have spent the last four months, a number of meetings and a lot of staff time, to bring forth what I understand is the staff's recommendations for the draft strategic plan. So, without further ado, I guess, city administrator Marsh, your is yours.
I'd like to thank Mr. Jankowski for all the work he did leading up to this point, and actually including this point, because he has done some additional minor editing to this version of it, but just to explain the process, since we last saw this document, we put it, I put together an internal team of staff members made of myself, Ms. Kimmel, Sonia Reicherts, and Dan Stefani, and what we did is we took basically the core of the document, the first 10 pages that outline the goals, the mission, the guidelines, and everything that we'll be going over tonight, and refined that to what we had seen as a lot of the comments that were made in the sessions, the networking session, and the breakout sessions that we've had with the council in the last couple of months. So, with that said, this is the most recent draft of the document. Obviously, it's still a very fluid document. If need be, we can make additional changes, but I believe at this point, we've come to the point, at least at the staff level, where we would recommend this version with some minor tweaks. Moving on, if you could turn to, I'm going to change things up here a little bit, and go to page 10 in your handouts there. Basically, the mission and the vision were something that the staff was charged with, coming up with, and here's what we have. So, let us know what you like and dislike about it. The mission's to provide a safe, sustainable, well-planned, and fiscally responsible city where a sense of community builds a high quality of life. The vision, a welcoming, vibrant community where people want to live. We wanted it to be simple. We wanted to incorporate a lot of the ideas that came out of the brainstorming, networking sessions, and this is what we came up with, so. Any questions on that?
I thought the mission was excellent. You know, first blush after, and we spent a lot of time in the brainstorming, wrestling with that, and I thought that was succinct.
I will note that this was the last thing that staff got, had accomplished. We went through the rest of the process that we're going through tonight, and this was the hardest, really the hardest thing to come up with, and we were happy with it. Okay, moving on.
Bussie?
Sorry, Ken. On the vision, I mean, I like it, where people want to live. Any thoughts as far as and work, or something on that? We're trying to build our commercial, you know, infrastructure, and would that be something of consideration?
I think, I think it's a good point, and we could, you know, take some more, you know, look at it a little more and try to refine it a little bit and send it to you via email, but...
Just, just a suggestion, I think, you know, to live, but also work, because we want to have businesses come to our community. Obviously, if people, if our residents work at those, that's great, because, you know, that's a very sustainable environment.
Alder Thomas?
I agree with you, but I think it goes beyond work, because the business owner, I mean, if we want someone to build a business, they may or may not work. So, it's got to be something about work and live and do business, have a business.
Yeah, okay, sure.
You know what I'm...
Some kind of consensus, an agreement, in general sense, if they do some wordsmithing to add those words? Alder Spate?
Well, I guess my only comment would be that I'm certainly not opposed to it, but the notion of living is a broad, I mean, I realize that typically when we sit somewhere that we think just first about residential living, but to live is to work and to play and to sleep, and so in the broadest sense, like this vision and its simplicity does, it comprises all of those things, it's just...
If I'm Walmart, well, I don't want to use Walmart. If I'm, if...
Oh, clinics.
I was a clinic. I wouldn't think that live applied to me.
So...
It's a welcoming, vibrant community. I don't know, I just, simplicity is important.
So, Alder Holm, or Alder Bussie just put forth just kind of the concept, two more words, to live and work.
Or business is probably a better, somehow, somehow, you guys can figure that out.
Okay. But feedback, right? You should have feedback.
But I just want to know that there's a kind of a general, you know, because it's bound to getting it done now.
We'll, we'll let staff finish it, but I just want, I don't want one of us to direct staff to take the bound a certain course. Alder Thomas, then Alder Spate.
Well, it strikes me, since the number one priority here is community and economic development, we, it, we think the businesses are important, and therefore ought to be a part of the vision.
So, how would you, if you were going to say?
I don't know.
What would you say? Okay. Alder Spate?
Have to think about it.
Then Alder Holmquist?
What if we changed the word "live" to "be"? A welcoming, vibrant community where people want to be. I mean, to be some places, to live, work, play, it's everything. I mean, I would agree, it's a better word than "live", but...
Alder Holmquist?
Where people want to live and do business.
Library will close in 15 minutes. Please make your selections.
Alder Wood? I guess I agree with Alder's statement. It's important for a vision statement to be as simple as possible, and I think you can see as, once you start to tug at it, you start, you could add shop, you could add play, you could, so I do, I think, just substitute the word "to be" for "to live", captures it.
Is there...
Yeah, you can see how we struggled with it, too. But we thought the key word there, and it, it sort of pointed to academic development, was vibrant. Vibrant community is, has the premise of, you know, thriving businesses and nice homes and good schools, so we, we saw that word vibrant as being a all-encompassing word in that statement. I, but we'll look at some options.
I guess I would ask that the work team kind of juggle to be or not to be. That is the question, Alder.
I really, I think that the word "be" is a really good word for a number of reasons. If you work here but don't live here, and so you'd like to be here, if you want to come here and shop but you don't live here, if you want to open a business, so "be" is an all-encompassing word that I think covers it all, because we want people to be here, residents, living here, visiting here, coming to hotels, staying here. I think that's a really...
So, give that some serious thought.
We will. We will.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving on here, we do have our guiding principles, which, I don't see a page number on this, but I believe that was also...
Page three in your packet.
Okay, page three in your packet. We basically have five guiding principles responsive. We will respond to residents' requests in a timely, informative, respectful, and thorough manner. Transparent. We will be honest and transparent, providing informations on our actions and decisions. Fiscally responsible. We will act in a fiscally responsible manner on behalf of our residents. Collaborate. We will work together. And sustainable. We will strive to be sustainable in everything we do, so. Those, we whittled those down from, I believe, seven we had, and we sort of combined a few and came up with the five guiding principles.
And all of these have measurable...
Yeah.
...metrics to prove that you're living by the principle? Questions? Will. Questions? Statements?
Okay, moving on now to our... Yeah. Okay, now we have our roadmap. See, we've changed things up a little bit from last time you saw this page. The six buckets that are now noted as street signs on our journey here used to be on the roadway, and our roadway are actually our five guiding principles. So, we're going to be responsible, transparent, sustainable, fiscally responsible, and collaborative along our roadway to achieving the six main buckets or objectives here. Number one is support community and economic development, as Alder Thomas noted a few minutes ago. Number two is improve and maintain our city infrastructure, and obviously, these aren't by priority, these are all equally important objectives. Number three, support the attractiveness and safety of our neighborhoods and homes and businesses. Four is become more sustainable. Five, improve our city operations. And six, maintain and improve our existing quality of life assets, programs, and city services. And up at the top, you see in the clouds, there are really the marketplace realities, things that are impacting how we get from point A to point B. Expectation that services will be maintained or improved. Monona must grow through slow and costly redevelopment. Aging facilities will need to be addressed. Current technology drives customer expectations. Interest rates are not controllable. Fixed costs continue to increase. Resources and staff will continue to be stretched. So, again, we narrowed down the marketplace realities somewhat and came up with, through combination and addition, subtractions, we came up with our marketplace realities. So, this is the one-page, you know, presentation we would give to the, you know, to the community groups, that we would hand out to, you know, people that would be interested in this document and so forth, so.
And the next exit sign, the big sign?
Yep, the next exit is, you know, where we're going. Performance excellence, cultural, of a proactive and continuous improvement, and creative planned approach to problem solving. So, that's where we're going.
Alder Thomas?
Just a minor edit. Do we need a comma between creative and planned? Otherwise, it's creative planning versus creative approach.
Where are you reading that?
On the next exit.
Oh.
Continuous improvement and creative planned approach. If you don't put a comma in there, then the planning is what becomes creative, I think, if I remember my...
Okay, no, it does change the meaning without a comma, so, but I don't know what the intent of the work group was.
Leah's did a lot of the wordsmithing.
A comma would mean, it's a creative...
Approach.
Planned approach versus having it out, it's a creative planned approach, which is what Alder Thomas says, you're emphasizing that you've created...
Depends on what you want creative to modify.
I think you do want the comma.
I, I do. It's a...
It's a little...
And it could have gotten dropped.
Any questions on our roadmap?
I guess just one, just an observation, only because I know I've received some feedback from council members and things about, one of the clouds, I think, in Monona is, because we are an older landlocked community, it's not just growth, slow and costly redevelopment, you know, I think that points us always to businesses, but just to, for instance, the famous sidewalks, you know, that, it's harder in Monona, you know, because we don't have greenfield, you know, you just don't go and improve things, albeit probably a few people would argue, in the new development, that these are important and required things to be done. It's much harder, as, you know, people have 200-year-old oak trees in their right-of-way and things like that, so I guess, I would just like to acknowledge a little bit that I think that's a cloud for us, that being an established, landlocked community, everything's a little harder. Not just business. Business is harder, but so is trying to improve residential lifestyle and living, so I just thought it would be nice to acknowledge.
Yeah, we can definitely add a cloud. They're nice, they're nice clouds, so another one wouldn't hurt.
Just throw it out there for digestion. Alder Spate?
I did notice that this road doesn't have sidewalks or bike lanes, just for...
But you can pass on it.
We'll work on that. Okay.
I'm not, that's not one, but just a thought.
Okay, moving on to the, to the various buckets here. We do have, on each of these pages, we note our mission and vision and guiding principles to remind us, you know, where, what's leading us in these directions. Number one, support community and economic development. We have five subheadings to that. Number one is focus on targeted developments. Two, update development plans. Three is to identify development, identify, develop partnerships and funding sources. Four is improve the marketing communications of economic development, and five is to make it easier for potential businesses and developers. We'll break that down further as we go through the document. Number two was to improve and maintain our city infrastructure, improve our state, street maintenance and repair, improve our, the safety of our streets, bike and pedestrian infrastructure, improve and upgrade our city buildings, and improve our transit effectiveness. Number three, support the attractiveness and safety of our businesses, neighborhoods, and homes. Four subheadings there. Number one is to improve and upgrade building facades and home appearance. Number two is strengthen code enforcement. Three is become more welcoming to newcomers. Number four, maintain and improve public safety. Bucket number four, become more sustainable, incorporate sustainability in everything we do, improve our energy efficiency, reduce city energy consumption and waste. Number four, identify, develop partnerships, and funding sources. Number five, improve our stormwater management and execute our clear water initiatives. And number six, partner with community organizations to encourage residents' waste reduction. Number five, improve our city operations, standardize processes and improve online access to them. More effective planning, clearly define goals and objectives, develop a culture of continuous improvement, develop our reporting and matrix, improve our use of technology, improve our communication and response to residents, and increase public awareness of city services and values. And lastly, maintain and improve our existing quality of life assets, programs, and city services. You're looking at the various departments of the city there, the senior center, library, parks, recreation, fire protection, police, and public works.
Questions? Alder Thomas?
Can I assume that for all of these, they are not in any kind of rank order?
That's correct. Yep, each one is...
Okay, how will people who read this know that?
I think we need to come up with a statement, maybe in a...
Copy and paste? A preface. A preface. If I may go up to the...
So, there is, in terms of a flow, these were the things that came out highest in survey and in discussions, and so there is kind of a flow. Now, you're not going to, you know, work on number one, then number two, then number three. You're going to, you're going to, you're going to see, it'll have in the later ones, there are certain initiatives that you're going to do in order, and you're going to, like the, improve your city operations, there is kind of a flow to that, that you kind of start with this, then you start with this, then you go to this. You know, you don't start right away with metrics, right?
So, do I, so do I assume that senior center is a higher priority than public works?
No.
But, see, that's, I, I think for people who are reading this, I mean, I don't assume that, but I assume for people who have not gone through the process, who have not read it, and who are used to seeing things that way, something in the preface that would explain this would, I think, be useful.
So, for that one, could you put in forens and do it in alphabetical order?
Sure.
Just state on there, just say, listed in alphabetical order.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll make it clear.
Unless there was a reason you had them stacked, but if there's not. Okay.
Are you suggesting change the order?
Just the bottom, it's down here.
Oh, 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 got it.
So, these, so that, this, Alder Thomas's point was, is this weighted heavier, this is more important than this one?
Yep, got it. Okay, just...
Alder Bussie?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the, you've got the sustainability in everything we do, sort of in... we do, sort of encompassing everything. I think it's important that they have their own silos, so to speak, but I think that it's also important that they're incorporated in everything because I think opportunities, when you talk about upgrading building, infrastructure, an opportunity for sustainable activity is huge. The challenge is going to be, how do we get that voice at the table at Public Works, at the table at CDA, at the table at Plan Commission, to take the information of what's happening in the city back to sustainability, where they can then use their expertise to bring feedback to those, those, those groups. But thanks for wrapping them or tying them together on that. And I think, again, the challenge is, how do we, how do we do that? But that's not for tonight.
Yeah, that was definitely made clear, that this body wanted to see sustainability, maintain their own bucket, yet they wanted it to be all-encompassing.
Alder Homequist?
I'm not sure if it was intended to be this way, but the, the break between the internal priority goals and external, I'm not sure if that was supposed to be half over the sustainability on purpose, or if it was meant to be lined up. It's just a visual thing that popped out at me, and then I have one other comment after that.
In the planning session, people, there is that line, that half of that is more about, what are we going to do as a city? And then the second half is more, how are we going to now get the city involved in? So, you can almost see that the first part of this is improving the city's energy efficiency and consumption and waste. And then the second piece is, okay, how do we partner with external and then get the, improve our stormwater management and execute our, and partner with community organizations to encourage resident waste reduction? So, there's a big chunk of stuff that was more, what are we going to do? You know, let's get our act together and sustainable, and then we'll help the community come along, too. So, and if you want to move that, we can move that, too. You'll see that those are, most of these are internal from low down, internally focused, and the other ones are kind of extra.
So, Alder Homequist, was your question that line right there?
Yes.
About why that one is where it's at? And is that where that should be, Walter? Do you think you're comfortable with where that, that was positioned intentionally there?
Okay. Yeah, I think it was, sorry. It was brought up in, in the planning session, and it's really, sustainable is kind of internal and external, and so that's why I drew the line there. So, but it's not a big deal, but we can.
Alder Homequist, you had a second question?
Yeah, then the second was underneath three, three D, the maintain and improve. It always sends a kind of an interesting message when you're going to maintain something, but you're also going to improve it. Doesn't seem like it fits. It should either be one or the other.
Well, I think the point came across in our discussions during our sessions, that we do have high-quality public safety and something we want to maintain, but it's also something we want to build on.
You could say continue to maintain.
That wouldn't do anything in terms of progress, though.
Continuously improve? I mean, is it really a maintenance thing, or is it a continuous improvement thing?
See, I kind of like it the way it is, because.
What we have is really good now.
Not broken.
But we are going to improve it.
It can always be better.
Yeah, but it can always be better.
And if you look at the next level down, and you look at that public safety one, there are maintenance activities of things that, you know, replacing cars and doing, and then there's new activities that are, no, we're going to, we're going to try these new things so that we can improve our public safety. One of them being the sidewalks and figuring out, how do we do, get pedestrian safety? That's a, there is some, a little bit of maintain in that, but there's also a lot of improve. We've got to do better than that.
Yeah, I think if you hold some of the questions like this until we go through all the layers, and then maybe some, maybe it'll make a little more sense.
Sounds good.
So, but, I mean, feel free to enter any time, and we'll, we'll try to answer the questions. So, moving ahead here, first of all, now we've broken it out one more layer here. Support community and economic development. Under that heading, and it's going to be hard for you to see, so please reference the document in front of you. Examples of potential measures. You know, this is how we're going to measure ourselves. Increase in taxable value. Number of qualified contacts. That means how many people our sta, how many businesses and individuals have staff had contact with in terms of economic development. Satisfaction with service. Job loss, clothings. Local employment rate. Development cycle time. So, there's, there's some good measurables there. And if we go to item 1A, focus.
Would equalized value be something in this one?
Um.
Or is that tax?
Taxable value is, I mean, we could break it down a little further.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. I was reading the screen here and looking. One.
I, you may want us to wait, but sorry. One of the things, I would be as interested in the percentage of contacts that are successful, not just the number of contacts. And I, and I, this goes back to my old days when we used to do a lot of stuff, but it never led to success. And success is, is measured by how many developments or potential developments you have out of, I mean, you could have two contacts and have, I mean, it's just another way of measuring, but I think it's a way of measuring success. Contacts are good, but the success really is in the outcome of that success.
Yeah, measuring your pipeline.
Yep, 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 yep. Because if you look at it and you say, I have 100 contacts and we're not successful, then you have to look at what it is we can do to make us more successful.
Okay. Yeah, we can clarify that measurable.
That makes sense?
Yeah. We're definitely going to be measuring ourselves, I think, to your point on how successful we are, you know.
Because one of the reasons for measuring is to modify, to change in the continuous improvement part of, do we need to look at how we're doing this?
Right. Okay. All right. 1A, focus on targeted developments. Attract restaurants and retail. Attract quality job employers. This, the staff owner on this will be the Community Development Department. Basically, Sonia and myself fall into that category. The strategies that fall as the next heading there. Focus business attraction efforts on South Town Industrial Park. IEDD diagnostics, market accessibility, CNG availability. And we have a timeline on there of, you know, pre-June 2014. The second bullet point there is to facilitate public access and commercial waterfront development. We think that's a five-year objective. Start in 2014 and see where that goes. North Manona Drive during, during, near the high school. That's something that we're working on now, and we see that as an ongoing project as properties become available. We look at whether it's viable or desirable to take control of those properties or work with the private sector to do so. And then consider overlay districts and commercial corridors, business park, Beltline, Bridge, Broadway. And we see that as a five-year objective. Update development plans is 1B. The staff owner would be the Community Development Department. Update the comprehensive plan. We're starting that. We've actually started that with Sonia, and it's going to be a project for 2014. We'll include a survey in there for commercial wants and needs for residents and developers. And again, that's, that's, that's sort of the beginning, the kickoff of the comprehensive plan in the spring. Update economic development plan after the comprehensive plan. I believe the economic development plan was done in 2004 or '05, shortly before I arrived, and that'll be a key document update. Update the Broadway corridor plan. I believe that plan was done in the early '90s, and that's, that's an area of redevelopment that we're seeing a lot of potential expansion. Maintenance plan from Manona Drive. We have a great commercial corridor. Let's make sure that it's the same 10 years from now, 20 years from now. 1C, identify, develop partnerships with funding sources. Again, the staff owners, community development. Identify federal, state, regional, county, and local public and private funding options for businesses and residential improvements. This is ongoing. It's something we do now. It's something we want to do tomorrow. Investigate, improve intergovernmental cooperation with Madison. An example of that is Manona Drive, Bridge Road, redevelopment area, TID districts, et cetera. And that's also ongoing. Fund, renew Manona. Obviously, it's something we, it's, it's, it's a rolling grant program that's out there, and we want to make sure that there's, there's funding in there. Obviously, 2018 is going to be a key year with TID 2 closure. And then fund, I'm sorry, gauge support for Manona Drive maintenance bid. That's only one option in terms of maintaining. Manona Drive is a bid district, but it's, but it's an option, and we want to look at it in 2014. Develop financial assistance, TIF packages, kit, it's a kit for potential businesses and homeowners, and include it on the website. We want to have everything at the fingertips of the developers and the homeowners. 1D is improve the marketing and communication of economic development. Again, the owners, community development. Develop communications and a marketing plan for report. CDA recently did the TID report, and that's something that we can really market in 2014. Create and provide market report for potential businesses, developers, to expand and support existing businesses. See that as a two-year plan. Partner with Madison representatives. WEDC, WEOA for marketing initiatives. Again, we need to build our relationships in the metropolitan area. Post data and information on new economic development webpage, including education, public relations content. We really want the economic development page of our new website to be a selling point for Manona. And then broaden marketing and development potential to other markets. You know, we, we need to focus on, on growth, and the way to do that is to dream big. 1E, make it easy for potential business and developers. I think we're doing a great job of that now, but we can always get better. And the staff owners, community development. Streamline standardized process for development review. Something we want to work on right away in 2014, and the website's going to be a big tool for that. Streamline the permitting process and improve building inspection process to a minimum time. So. Any questions?
Yeah, and 1A, any reason that residential or office were excluded from the, from the list?
We do address residential a little later in the document.
Okay. Any others?
All right. Okay. Bucket number two is improve and maintain our infrastructure. Some of the measurables there, general. Dollar spend by type of project. Project on time and within budget index. Infrastructure. Sewer and water replacement status. Basically, give everybody a schedule of pending projects, closed projects, and completed projects. Street paser rating, that's the rating system that's used to determine the priorities of when we, when we do our local roads. And then transit, cost per rider. That'd be a measurable. 1A, improve our street maintenance and repair. Staff owners, public works. We're looking at street repair gap. Investigate gap to learn what is, the true issue is. You know, what, how many roads do we have? How many miles of roads? What's it going to cost us? What are the priorities? Develop more aggressive street maintenance repair plan based on approved budget. This is obviously ongoing. 2B, improve the safety of our streets, bike and pedestrian infrastructure. The owners there, our public safety committee, lead staff, public works, community development. And then the tactics. Create a committee, pedestrian and bike safety program, and safe routes to school program. That's some potential funding we can get our hands on in future years, and we see that as a two-year initiative. Gather data to identify the problem areas. We see that as part of that committee's charge. Gather speed and travel data on heavily used streets. Identify higher traffic walkways to schools and parks and accident locations. All this will determine where we need to make improved pedestrian and bicycle access points. And then create option solutions and funding for pedestrian and bike safety. You know, after we've secured some funding or budgeted for it, and we've come up with our plan, we need to come up with our options and go ahead and complete the process. 2C, improve and upgrade our city facilities. Staff owners are the public works and facilities committee. Develop long-range facilities plan. We've obviously taken a first stab at that in 2012. We need to review the Bray study and assess needs, and that's something we could do in 2014 with the facilities committee. Review options. Prioritize needs. Determine funding options and sources. Develop recommendations and long-range timeline, and develop a plan for more efficient use of office space. I see that as all one project that falls under the facilities committee and recommendations through the other various committees.
Question? So, I like this, but I guess just as far as like something concrete, are we going to be looking, I mean, are you suggesting the facilities committee is actually going to be considering our long-range plan for, you know, like where the fire department and the police station are and stuff like that, or?
No, I, they obviously wouldn't be the decision-maker on that. That would come back to this body, but they're going to be the ones to kick off the plan, review the existing Bray facilities study and, and make recommendations. I think you're going to see this process involve many other committees. Obviously, it's going to involve public works, police, fire.
Right.
On down the line. So, I think they're going to kick off the process in, in 2014, and then we'll move towards the facilities plan as to where we're going to have these buildings and office space in 2015.
And so, is it, and I'm just, I'm just asking the question because I think it's an important thing for us to consider, but it also, it seems like something that needs to be looked at by, you know, an ad hoc committee or something, because it just seems like, I know, I, I say that, and I want to take it back immediately, because I know we don't need more committees, but I also feel like.
This is big. This is huge.
So, I'm just asking the question.
I agree with.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I agree, too. I mean, I think the facilities committee is really, I see it as a technical review, kind of. You know, it's their task, not, this is more.
Vision.
Policy stuff, then. So.
But my thought was, and we're a week ahead of time, I was hoping to avoid facilities till January 1, but knowing that, let the games begin. But I support this much, but I totally concur that everyone gets a kick at the cat. And the Bray study, we've never officially really done anything. I didn't want to do anything with it. Well, Manona Drive was in process, but now it's fair to bring up. So, I would ask that each committee chair take it to their committee to see if it does have an impact or should have an impact or could have an impact on that committee at the conclusion, and I don't know what that point of time is. But then, I do agree, it's going to be a very specialized, and perhaps it'll be a representative of each of those committees, you know, to come together to really get into the arm-twisting on it, and then there'll be 52 other layers after that. But I think this year, if we can work it through the committee process and the visioning, I would be very happy. Alder Thomas?
The, what, what I see is the real complexity in this is what are our priorities in terms of, I mean, we have multiple building needs. I mean, we have multiple building needs, or perceive that we do. Some people perceive, you know, whether it's community center, whether it's fire department, whether, you know, what it is. And we can't do it all short-term, so what comes first, and where do we put our energy in terms of? Because there's a lot of, if you can't do it here, and you have to go off-site, for example, to do a public safety building, that's a lot of time to sort of do that background and research. And so if that's first on the list, then you would start doing that. If it's not first on the list, I don't even think it makes sense unless you want to be acquiring property. So what comes first?
Well, I haven't talked to Pat. I have Pat's review tomorrow evening, and I've started, as regards him, I've got things together, but I'm also kind of giving him a to-do list that I thought, and what, I'm not saying it's right, but what I was going to do is kind of like doing the budget, put forth some thoughts, targets for people to take a shot at, you know, and I agree, totally that's stupid or whatever, as it relates to the facility. And just what I feel is a logical steps to that. And just to give some, I think it's, at least I find it's easier to edit than to create. So if somebody shows me something, I can tell you what's wrong with it versus, so I'll take with Pat's help if he wants to incorporate any staff, and everyone will get a chance. But to at least put something out there for this year, here's what we hope to accomplish. Here are the questions, and I think you hit on so many of them there. What are our priorities? What do we need to do? What do we have to do? What do we want to do?
And what are our options? I mean, do you, do we, you got the community center and work with what we have, or tear it down and build something?
This is a multi-year project, years.
Yeah.
Plural. But if we could come up with some consensus of what do we feel we need to do at the end of this year, I'd be very happy in terms of...
Where do we start?
And then you go to the next step.
Yeah, that's going to be the million-dollar question, is what are our priorities? And that's going to be determined by this body.
A million.
Staff's going to have their ideas, but ultimately, you guys are going to determine the priorities.
Maybe we'll have to ask the community.
Yeah?
With their new website.
They speak through you, yeah? All right.
Anything else?
Two D, improve our transit effectiveness. Finance director, staffs, and then the mass transit authority. Actually, it's mass transit committee. We don't have an authority locally.
We don't have any authority.
Something we might look into, right?
I think they want to be.
All right. So we'll change that there. Anyway, the strategies and tactics, discuss viability of collaboration with existing transit. Obviously, we've been down this road before, but it, you know, the change in leadership thing, it never hurts to look at these issues again. Decrease cost per user. Right now, we have a very high cost per user rate, you know, low ridership. Promote increased ridership. And then review current transit plan and identify transit needs for public and seniors. So a lot of work.
Alder Wood?
Yeah, I would just actually go back over to the left on the metric. I think in addition to the cost per rider, I think we need to look at coming up with the number of benefits per rider, which is a little harder to do, and you might have to use some national or DOT developed numbers to do it. But there are benefits, economic accessibility, mobility, benefits beyond just, if we, all we know is the cost per rider, you know, then even that by itself doesn't really tell us is it high or low. I mean, it'll be a totally subjective judgment whether it's high or low. I think if you try, if we could somehow come up with quantifying the benefits, it would at least give us both sides of the scale, so.
Yeah. We can definitely add other measurables there.
Could I ask, if you just have a moment, to send an email with exactly some of those thoughts you just shared there in terms of what they might consider measuring that way? I agree with you. They have some...
I knew I shouldn't have said anything.
I know. It's that lawyer.
It's a team, team project.
Yes.
Alder's chair.
I also just want to state the obvious, which is that if sustainability informs everything that we do, which we've said it does, for economic development, for businesses and who need workers to get to their work site, like, you know, WPS, which is well-connected to Madison Metro, you know, the health, our health clinics don't have transit service, really, and that's a negative to them in their, you know, lead rating. So for development and sustainability, if development's important to us, transit needs to be a higher priority because it has an impact. So...
Good point. Alder Thomas?
The other thing, and I'm not, I haven't heard the conversation about this in a long time, but one of the things that we used to talk about, that there was value to the community, property values, et cetera, to have a transit system in your community even if you didn't use it. I mean, it's another service that the community provides that creates value to the community.
That would be a hard one for me to swallow, but...
Well, I...
But I hear you.
And I...
We're getting close to that at certain days, I feel, so...
Well, and I think, you know, as I think about this, as we're putting up some of these new apartment buildings.
Yep.
Yeah. I'd much rather, I'd like to see the top one be promote increased ridership, which is one of their goals, you know, rather than decrease, well, I guess decreasing costs always important, but the higher priorities to increase ridership. But I will be the first to embrace anyone who comes up with a way to do that.
Start at the new apartment building that...
And there you go.
Carry open, see if they'll stop there.
Whatever we can do.
Promote among those people who don't know it exists.
I just don't want to be here next year with the same data as we have this year, and it's incumbent upon all of us to, any good ideas, or even bad ideas, just ideas to try to do something different, because this just rankles me. Anything else?
Okay. All right, number three. Bucket three is support the attractiveness and safety of our businesses, neighborhoods, and homes. Some potential measures there, the facade improvement program, grants completed, city dollar invested versus private investment for improvements, renew Manona projects completed, number of building permits issued, number of code violations. Three A, under the objectives, improve and upgrade building facades, external appearance of buildings and homes, sorry, businesses and homes. Community development would be the staff owner, and the tasks would be to continue to fund Renew Manona program. Obviously, it's ongoing. Investigate options of funding and expanding of programs to improve housing quality. There's state programs out there and our local initiatives. Three B is to strengthen code enforcement, zoning, maintenance, condition, nuisance properties. And the staff owners are building inspection, and the new code enforcement officer that this body approved at the last budget. The strategies are...
Got you at this time. Romantic interlude.
We just thought you needed theme music, huh?
Excuse me, I lost. The strategies are respond promptly to residential questions and concerns, and follow up with residents once action's been taken. That's obviously ongoing. Strengthen regulations and property maintenance and nuisance codes. So we've noted some loopholes in our ordinance, loopholes in our ordinance out there. That's something we want to address right away next year. And then improve code enforcement with increased staffing. We've tackled that first hurdle, that individual. And provide online property owner permit records, permits and records, and that's something we'll work with on our new website. Three C is become more welcoming to newcomers. You see the staff owners there as administrative staff, starting right at the front desk with our receptionist. Develop a welcome wagon packet. That's been brought up by Alder Thomas, and we'd like to implement that in 2014. Meet and greet for new residents at existing community events. That's something we can do right away. Ensure that information regarding city services is easy to find on the new website, promote it to new residents. Obviously, we're working on that right now and roll that out the first quarter next year. And utilize social networks for new residents. Something we do now, but something we'll continue to expand on. And then three D, maintain and improve public safety. Our staff owners are police, fire, building inspection, and the public safety commission. The tasks are regular inspections of multifamily and commercial buildings. This is obviously ongoing. And increased use of technology, including website and social media applications to inform the public. The initial blast that we can get out to the public about storms or anything along those lines.
Questions? Alder Homequist, Alder Spate?
Over on the metric area, the number of code violations, should we be adding number of code violations rectified? Looking at, not as a, I would just rack up ton of complaints, but we're actually getting solved.
Yeah, I think they're getting resolved, but also if we freeze at a point in time, are we, are we attacking those, and we have less in the future? I think that's the way it was written. But...
Just as long as we can track that. I mean, I think getting a sheet, I imagine a scorecard in the future that would tell me a number, I'd want to know, well, all right, that's great, there's 100, but how many have been resolved, and how many are in process, and whatever.
Alder Spate, then Alder Thomas?
Zoning, as it relates to green space or permeable surface, is something that is not a part of our current residential zoning, and I think it's a huge loophole that we have. I could pave my entire yard if I wanted to in the city of Manona. I can't do that in Madison, and you can't do it in many other municipalities.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, I have no reason to doubt you, but really?
Forty percent of your yard has to be permeable in the city of Madison. And if...
We don't have to have...
No.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Get on that, Alder Spate, please.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
It just seems like an obvious thing that, you know, should...
It's like a sensible thing to pursue.
Yeah.
But please bring that, because it doesn't happen unless somebody carries that banner. Alder Thomas?
Well, actually, now I sort of forgot what I was going to say. But I was going to support what Alvin Homequist said, when the issue of knowing how many violations there are, because, you know, I have totally forgotten what I was going to say.
How many are resolved?
The night's young.
Yeah, well, I think, no, I'll tell you.
All right. Alder O'Connor?
How about a measurement of the number of citizen questions or concerns and the number that were resolved? I would think that'd be pretty easy to...
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think, yeah, we just need to clarify what we're measuring there exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
And again, it was my belief, and I continue to believe this, that the new website with the "how do I" section, or that there is a process to follow your concerns all the way through to resolution, and to know and have a date stamped, and allow Alders or those who want to look in and see what's outstanding to, right, Leah?
Yes.
Okay.
But our goal is to have this individual beat the complaints, so our new staff person will be out there looking for issues and attacking them.
Alder Thomas?
I have now remembered what it was that I, but that, supporting what Alvin Homequist said, the reason that you might want to know what the results are is because we had a period where things were getting thrown out in court because we had lousy... And so it isn't just the number of violations, but it's what, again, what happens to them. Because maybe we need to review our ordinances, maybe the inspector finds them difficult, and the judge throws them out. So the results of them, whether they go to court, whether they found guilty, and whether they indeed do improve their property, helps the council, I think, know whether we have the appropriate ordinances in place.
Yeah, I think we really tried to address that in three B there, where we want to review and improve our ordinances right away in the beginning of the year.
And one of the ways of doing that is to look at the violations and how we can, or if they say they can't issue a violation because we don't have an ordinance to address it.
Okay. Further questions?
Bucket four, become more sustainable. I know we, as a staff, edited that a little bit. I can't remember what the heading, I think it was become greener or something, and staff's recommendation was just to make it simple and become more sustainable. We want, one of the measurables there is to achieve the 20 by 25 renewable energy goal.
And I apologize, but isn't it the same number in both? Is it 25 by 25 or 20?
Twenty-five by 25.
It is 25 by 25.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a typo.
Okay.
Some of our potential, other potential measures are fuel purchase history, are we saving, you know, on our fuel purchases? Water management, water incidences, KPI, volume of stormwater capacity, annual VMT, and dollar a grant secured. Please don't ask me what those VMTs and KPIs are, but I know they have significant meaning.
KPIs are performance indicators. I don't know about VMIs.
We'll get that information for you, and we'll spell...
...rattles boroughs with money.
We'll spell that out for you.
Thank you.
Then item four A, objective, develop policies and strategies to incorporate sustainability in everything we do. Staff owners, sustainability committee, and our sustainability staff people. Strategies, develop and finalize comprehensive sustainability plan. That's in the works, and we'll roll that out in the first quarter of 2014. Train staff on sustainability and efficiency. That's ongoing. Four B, utilize technology to minimize paper use. Everybody is an owner in this. Staff training, and the strategies are staff training on technology that will reduce paper and energy. That's ongoing. Eliminate duplication of efforts. Example is preparing both an electronic and hard copy of documents. And that's something that we, you know, we hope to roll out in the next year's budget by eliminating some of these council and plan commission packets. Investigate electronic billing systems for bills. We think that'll be a learning curve for the public to get, to want that, but we think something we could roll out in three to five years. Investigate printers that make more efficient use of toners, e.g., good draft print functions. That's something we, we're going to purchase a printer next year, and we'll try to look into that function. Four C, reduce city government energy consumption. Staff owners here is public works. Find ways to reduce energy and fuel usage. That's ongoing. Reduce drive time to and from the drive sites due to lack of preparation or limit, you know, limit staff trips. Have employees take their breaks in the field, things like that were examples. And then LED lighting for building interiors and exteriors. That's something we think we can, you know, do through some grant programs and through our budgets over the next three to five years. Four D, identify and develop... Four D, identify and develop partnerships and funding sources. This would be, the staff owner would be the sustainability committee. Create a plan to fund incentivize, that's a tough one to say, incentivize, energy and water efficiency, three to five years. Investigate sustainability related to grants. Something staff is always looking at is grant opportunities. Investigate state funding for sustainable initiatives. Ongoing, again, Jennings done a great job with that, and we need to get more staff involved in that and look for more grant opportunities. And continuing financing, sustainable committees, educational efforts. And that's ongoing. And four E, improve our stormwater management and execute our clear water initiatives. This is a public works committee initiative and public works staff. The strategies are stormwater treatment, improving sediment and phosphorus capture before entering the lakes via structure improvements, something we've done a good job of, but we have a lot more to do. Educate residents regarding good stormwater practices. That's ongoing. And improve water quality by promoting resident business involvement with good practices to keep water on site whenever possible. Ongoing.
Alder Thomas, Alder Spade, Alder O'Connor?
Up under four A, where we're training staff, I also think it, there might be some benefit to doing some community education, and we could, you could use the new website, you could use the, you know, the tips, but to train the community in good, sustainable practices.
Good point. Alder Spade?
I was just gonna add that we might consider adding zoning to item E as it relates to water, stormwater, water quality, because item two is educate residents regarding good stormwater practices and that issue of improving our zoning codes. I mean, it is a huge way that we could embrace that.
Good.
Alder O'Connor?
I think we could add sustainability to four E also, because the sustainability committee will get involved in educating residents about those various items also.
Good, good.
That's true. Good points. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Moving along. Bucket five, improve our city operations. Some potential measures are response time to work order requests and citizen requests, something the mayor just noted. We'll be able to track that with our new website functions. Time spent fixing computers, downtime due to down computers. Website visits, so we get to see how many people are visiting our site in various areas and what some of the issues are. Objectives. Five A, standardize process and improve online access to them. You'll notice in this slide, what we did was, we didn't have each objective tied to a strategy. We thought the strategies tied into more than one of the objectives, so we listed them out there. So just, it's a little bit of a change. So I'm gonna go through the objectives first. Standardize process and improve online access to them. That's obviously administrative owner. Clearly define goals and objectives. Develop a culture of continuous improvement. I think I, we heard that from Alder Thomas earlier. Develop our reporting and matrix, and that's something we're working with Mr. Jankowski on in the next few weeks here. Improve use of technology. Improve our communication and response to our residents. And then increase public awareness of city services and value. Our strategies are communications. Obviously, the key here is our website. We're gonna look to promote the websites. We have several different variables under there that we've already gone over, so I'm not gonna reread those. We're gonna measure progress. Develop city key performance indicators and council dashboard. Build leadership skills to manage performance measures and processes. And develop service standards, something we want to do in the next year or two. All those under measure progress. Technology. We have the muffin project coming onboard next year, and that's gonna significantly increase speed and efficiency. Equipment replacement, something we always, it's ongoing, but we need to look at the best and the best quality and value. Investigate ways to improve email system. Obviously, it's been an issue in the past, and we need to make that better. Implement electronic billing. We've talked about that in prior strategies. And train staff in productivity skills. I doodle, Google Calendar, doodle documents, Google, Google documents, et cetera. Obviously, a lot of efficiencies out there we can take advantage of. And then others, review city committee structure. I think this is really ongoing, but something that we wanna, the mayor wants to look at early in 14. Review compensation and incentives. Develop a template and standards for department head reports. All stuff that we're gonna try to do right away as the year starts. Safety training. It's ongoing. We have a good relationship with our insurance company, CivMec, who does a lot of good training for our staff. Get updated operation policies in place. That's in progress now, and we hope to have something for you in 2014. And initiate city council department visits prior to budget sessions. We want the council to see what's going on in the various departments.
Questions?
Yep. I just want to note that you realize it does say doodle and productivity on the same line? Okay.
Watch your spine.
Okay.
You know what doodle is, right?
Yeah, sort of.
Bring it all evening.
Number six, bucket six is maintain and improve our quality of life assets, programs, and city services. The objectives. These objectives do line up with the strategies here if you follow the lines across there. So for the community center and park and recreation, obviously, there's the bucket to the right, but the objectives are the various departments. And then the strategies, I'll just go through those since you know what our departments are. In parks, interdepartmental collaboration, reduce duplication of services between libraries, senior center, park rec departments. We see a lot of programming out there, duplicating efforts. It's something we need to make sure we're catching. Program analysis and evaluation. We talked about this during the budget. Are there some programs that aren't attended well or aren't cost effective to run? Adopt parks and open space plan update. I know that's been in progress for a few years, but it's, I've been assured that it's, you know, nearing completion. And then complete scheduled upgrades and improvements to parks and open space. Obviously, those are both in the areas of maintenance and capital improvements. And for the library, library's 50th anniversary programming and fundraising drive. It's coming up here right around the corner. Fire protection and police protection. Public safety and the strategies are to monitor DAMECOM work and cost effectiveness. That's if it ever gets up and running. Not running yet.
Papers are working.
Another strategy is to, replacement of the apparatus. That's the new fire truck that the fire department's looking to purchase from Shorewood Hills. And that's in 2014. And upgrade video storage systems. It's an issue we've had in the police department for a few years. We need to be able to get data to both protect ourselves and the public. Public works and utilities, under the strategies, stormwater plan, we've talked about that already. Street maintenance, street improvements. We're looking at wellhouse improvements. Implementation of the new wayfinding signage, and that's something I'm personally working on now and will have in place by the opening of Manona Drive, the official opening of Manona Drive. And replace and increase public trees. That's something that's ongoing, but, you know, we do have the new issue with the, whatever that...
Ash borer.
Emerald ash borer that has finally hit our area. Develop efficient schedule for brush pickup. We're looking at pushing back the last pickup collection, and that'll be done in 2014. Continue emphasis on sustainability. Investigate recycling opportunities and investigate compost pickup, so all those things here. And then administrative services. Technology, we need to complete our server upgrade, which is actually in progress right now, but it'll be done in 2014. Replace scheduling and playback server. We talked about that with the video equipment. Upgrade to broadband network. That's the muffin project that was referenced earlier. All these are short term, 2014, end of 13 objectives. And then admin and other. Better use of data and decision making. Citywide staffing study, ensure staff compensation is commensurate with responsibilities. It's something we've been doing for the last three years, and we want to make sure we continue to do that. Investigate upgrade of our new phone system. Right now, our phone system isn't main, we can't maintain it. So it's, if it crashes, it's done. So we need to look at options there in the 2015 capital budget. Staff retention and development. And really, when we're looking at that, we need to also look at, you know, what department heads are leaving here in the next two or three, five years, and have a plan for that in place. And then investigate a new payroll system. I think we've been doing that since I started here, right, Leah? We'll continue to do that.
Alder Thomas?
Yeah, I'm surprised by the lack of measures in this column. Because, for example, and I'll take streets, public works for starters, we rate our streets to know when they, and if we are concerned about maintenance, we should be talking about how many streets there are that fall in level DC, and we should be reducing that. So we should be measuring that. There are a lot of things that we should be measuring in the public work stuff. In public safety, I think, in terms of speeding tickets, I mean, they do a lot, the number of clearance rates. There's a lot of that stuff that I know we talked about before.
Go back one. And so there's gonna be a whole initiative in 2014 of doing your reporting and metrics, and that'll be part of that piece of it. This was really just existing, here's what we're doing. You know, to develop a good set of metrics, you're gonna, it's gonna take a while, and you're gonna do a council scorecard, and we're gonna do, but that'll be part of that.
Okay. It was just more, so much more comprehensive, some of the other sections, and so I was surprised.
This whole bucket was really kind of, what's in your budget? What do you want? The existing stuff that you got going on that you want kind of to report on to the council? You know, they're gonna, they're gonna have a whole bunch of other functional stuff that they're doing. These were just kind of stuff that in 2014, 15, or 16, that is on your radar now and should be on your radar by department, so to speak. So...
And that's what we have today.
Can you go back up? So you do this professionally, you've done this with others. What did you learn? What's good? What's good? What's bad, yeah? What do we need to worry about or not be worried about? Did we get a passing grade on as far as we are?
Yeah, can I, I have a couple of slides for you guys. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to come back to you and explain, if you don't mind, and then I'll kind of go through. Here's, here's the stuff that kind of rolled up that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna help finish out. The citizen survey, when we had the planning session, you got, and it came up in the planning session of, you know what, you know, this doesn't look quite right, or I'm not exactly sure if this is the right index. So I went back to my statistician and said, okay, how would you do this? And he, so we do, I redid a little bit. The importance index is pretty much the same and the same of what you saw, but, and I can give this to you if you like. Here is...
I want, and I guess I would ask, look to Leah, I want all of this somewhere on the website so people, if they want to dig down into every comment, every anything, you know, I want to see how this sausage was made.
Yeah. So the deck that they have has everything. So here is, here's notes that we got from people. Here's the original. Here is all of the comments from the planning session, you know, your sticky notes that went on. Here is all the, here's all of the responses that happened, the original activity results. And, you know, in the planning session, we also have, here's the survey results, you name it. This is, you know, 154 slides. So if somebody wants to go out there and see, it's all there.
And it's a historic document.
Yep.
Why the hell did we do this? Well, because we talked about it in 2013.
Yeah.
Has that revised rating of the survey results been distributed to the council?
No. So, well, I don't know what Pat, I don't know what was sent to you.
This doesn't look familiar.
This was all in the document that I emailed you earlier in the week. Oh, okay.
So I think you have the revised one, so, and I can, but what you don't have is, if you want the actual raw data, I mean, there's this massive Excel file, and in speaking with my statistician, he was saying there's a couple of ways, and the reason it is different is, you can see, here are the responses. You could, you know, how many people said it was very important, somewhat important, somewhat unimportant, and very unimportant, and then how many said no opinion or neutral. And, but what I also want to point out is, you had, we had 568 responses, so there were a lot of people that didn't, so we just took those out of the mix, that if they didn't respond to it, we didn't put it in there. And then there's a couple of ways that, so all I did was took out those no opinion and neutral, and I divided and averaged it out, because you can see, look at here. Here was in community media and cable, you had 160 people that didn't even answer. So I wanted, and in the first one, I made that a negative, or it was a, and so he said, no, you should normalize all of these so that you have kind of an index and a rating. So I have two ways of doing that. One with the opinion, because if somebody said no opinion, they actually have an opinion of it's no opinion, they have no opinion of it. Or you can say, if they say no opinion, then you just take all of the no opinions out, and you don't even score them. And I have two different ways of doing it. When you look at that data, and if I were to look at just like the top 10, so here's the one with, where I counted the no opinions, I just gave them one point. So it was either 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, and then normalize the averages. So if you got a 5, that means you, you're on average, or you won't ever get a 5 unless everybody said it was everything in there. So the higher the number, if you have 4.87, that means that's the higher, higher the average of all of your, but you can see, I put in green here, the top, this is, this is sorted by gap, and you can see the top 10 are here. You know, there's a couple of anomalies where you can, you know, animal licensing, I don't think we're gonna do anything about, but, you know, here are the top 10, you can see these, it kind of aligns very closely to what we discussed in our, and what you see in the plan. And then the second way that I did it was, I took out all the non-responses, and you can see the numbers go down, but it's a lot of the same, but in different order. You can see street repair came up to the top on that in terms of the biggest gap. And so this is probably a little more accurate as to, you know, if I took out the no opinions and no responses and everything out... and no responses and everything out, you know, that's probably what the community is saying is the biggest gaps. So street repair, enforcement of property maintenance, storm drainage, bike pedestrian, response to citizen complaints. All of those are about the same ones in either way that you do it. It's just a little bit of different order. And so.
Do we have this piece too, or is that?
No, I have not sent this out. If you, I can put this out there. Now, I'd be leery that this is a spreadsheet that is, you know, 20 tabs, and it has, it has all the raw data. And actually, I wanted to ask you, do you want, do you want this available to citizens?
On everything.
Okay.
Unless there's something.
I guess the reason I was asking, interested in kind of following up of how the rankings might have changed is a little leery when we look at a survey result and say, well, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right. And it's sort of like you're in danger of reinforcing what you already think by saying, well, the survey must be wrong. So you start playing around with the, with the numbers until you think it's right.
Yeah. And that was the trouble I had. Well, my first pass at it was, as I said, now, talking to my statistician, he said, okay, here's probably the best way to take out those non-responses. Because there, if everybody answered every question, it wouldn't have made a difference.
Right.
But when you have wide gaps, if we had some with 106 people didn't answer the question at all, that, or, you know, 200 people, that makes a significant difference. It will swing it one way or the other. So, and that's why I just took out all of those non-responses and, or did it a couple of different ways. What I also have in this, in this is, and this is kind of cool, where you can see, this is by demographic, and you can see, and it has drill-down capabilities. And so here is the average number of respondents that answered the question, so you can see it varies widely. But here's your average score, and this is, this is sorted by your, the, how the different groups responded. So the number one thing of highs, the highest average score across all of them was Manona as a good place to live. Now, you want to drill down, and you want to see, you can see it by age group. And you can see, here's what the 60 plus, and 40 to 49, and 50 to 50, and you can see how they did it by age group. And you can have that drill-down capability. And these are just the ones that, so what the AA means, or the A is that those initial questions, what are your overall experience with Manona? And the other questions are the interaction you have with the city. That's what that RA, that, so when you see the courtesy and knowledge and overall impression, those were the, they were rating, how well did the city do in that? And that, and we just put them all together saying, here's overall how people are scoring you on the same scale and on the, you know, taking out the number of responses and all of that. So I wanted to explain that to you. So you guys want to drill down? You want to look at it and kick the tires? Yeah.
Do you have that demographic data for those other metrics that we, or the, you know, things that we're doing well and not doing well? Like, so for example, how people rated pedestrian and bike issues by age?
No, only because, what was the issue with that? There were so many variables of how important they were versus what the demographics. So this, I, I, it would have taken probably another 50 hours to put together that, you know, if you wanted to see that by, now, you can, if you like, you can go to the actual, here's the individual responses, and you can go out to the demographics out here, and you can see how many, I can put a filter out here. Oops, filter. And I can say how many people over, that make over $75,000. Click on that. And I can see what, how they responded to any of the, any of the questions. If you have a, because there were several questions, if you have a specific thing, just email me, and I'll send you, I'll do a pivot table and say, oh, you know, here's, you want to see it by demographic? You want to see it by age? You want to see it by how much they make? You want to see it by education level? You know, have at it. It's, I just didn't want to give you every permutation of all of the demographics, because it would have been a 350-page report, so. Okay? So let's go back to, I just wanted to give you that, that update, and.
And yes, maybe we can get you a pen drive or something? I mean, I don't know how we've been moving these documents back and forth or Dropboxing. I don't know how big we can handle stuff.
I can, I can get it to these guys, and if they want to put it on the website, and then you guys go get it, and we can put it in the minutes or whatever. And I know that that Excel file, I think, is, you know, five megs.
Poor Gina Lee, if she wants to do a thorough investigation of all this, so.
Okay, good. So I showed you this last time, and this is what I'm gonna help to kind of wrap up and help with the, but. First, get training, the website, get your content all up and running. Let's talk about it in 2014. And I, and I went through this last time. Continue doing that, doing the website. And then, and then, and I think Leah's already got this plan of getting those standardized processes online. You're, you know, anything that we can get online, get online. But in order to get it online, you gotta, you gotta standardize it, right? You gotta have, here's, here's how we do permits. Here's how we do, and then be able to communicate it to your, to your client, your citizens of, here's the permitting process. Here's how you get a zoning appeal, or whatever. Okay? Then the technology, I know Jason has been met with you guys and helped with that first piece, and we'll kind of tee that up and make sure that you're lined up for at least the next couple, three years. And we've talked about that offline. And then if you need help with the committee structure, I'd be happy to. I have some work on that. But you guys already, I think, have started discussions around that, and there wasn't a huge opportunity, but there is, is some there. And then I would like to do an offline group. Once we start talking about the metrics, is start doing a standardized reporting template. And I'd like to do a small little, you know, one council member, maybe a couple city staff, and we talk about, okay, what would be a standard template, and what would that look like? I've got 10 examples of different executive reporting, and we'll just kind of combine and make one standard template that works for both the staff and the committees. Then we've already talked about the sustainability initiatives and facilities, and then I'll help with a little bit of the reporting. And I especially want to focus on the, once you have your website up and running, and we get the work order request system, and, but first, we gotta get data. And I don't know enough about the system to get data out, but we have to have that set up where your work order request systems, every complaint, or hey, I need a pothole fixed, or whatever it is, anything that you, any request, should go right into that website and categorize it, and that's how you're gonna determine your service levels. And you're, without doing that, you don't have any data. So I just want to, and so all the things that you were talking about, you know, what about public works and the PESA rating, and that, all of that stuff should be in the system somewhere, and/or you set up a reporting templates. And that takes it much harder than just overnight, especially for a city. And then talk about phase two technology. Okay? To answer your question, Bob, what did I like, dislike, or learn? I gotta, I gotta give a big round of applause for the staff, because you guys did a great job. I gave you, I gave you about 85% done, and I don't know about you guys, but I think they did a good job of narrowing it down, and they did a really good job of assigning ownership. I, all I gave them was the, the stuff that we had the last time we had. They assigned ownership, they put in the timelines, they weeded out stuff that they thought, you know what, we're gonna do that later, or we've already done that, or et cetera. And I think you guys did a really good job with that. So.
I would concur with that. And going through this this weekend, I actually got a little frustrated, you know, even by doing the PowerPoint and having it build, it just looked like so much. So it really helped, even though, even having you read every word and taking it in logical order. It became a lot clearer document to me. So with that being said, Andy, are you in the control room? Yeah. Could this piece, can you edit from the beginning of this discussion tonight to the end, all about the strategic plan, and make that be a separate video, and have that on your website as a separate strategic plan video? So at any point in time, if people want to wade through all this, I thought tonight was a good explanation. Here's some of the interaction. Other questions? Anyone else learn, like, or dislike anything? Alder Spate?
I'll just say, I think this has been a great process, and I would commend, you know, Wally and your team, and then the city staff, certainly. I mean, this is a great launchpad for, for the future. And obviously, the most important thing is measuring and implementing, but you've got to have a good plan, and this is something I think we can all be proud of, so.
Walter knows where we live, so he has promised to keep an eye on us and handhold us. Alder Thomas?
I, I think it's a thing, because I think that in general, when people are frustrated with customer service, it is more often than not a systems issue and not a personnel issue. And if we can use this to improve the systems, it will be better for the people, and it will be better for staff.
Point we'll take it. All right. Thank you, and I'm sorry, personal finance, we didn't get to your invoice, but we'll get a rock to it.
It's okay. I'll make one last comment. All planning digresses to real work, so good luck.
Thank you very much, Walter. Appreciate it. All right. Appointments. We have two this evening. Steve Halverson has agreed to serve on the Strategic Service Awards Committee, effective immediately because of a resignation. And Camille Haney, as an election inspector, is in motion for approval of the appointments.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the appointments are in place. Committee reports, any further committee reports? Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
Library Board meets tomorrow night. We're gonna hear from Janine about the sustainability plan, and also start reviewing personnel policies for the library.
Good. Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Bassi?
Plan is working on the, on the plan, comprehensive plan, and similar to what the mayor said, a lot of it is going to be updating data, so, and then making suggestions. So it'll be an edit track type of process, and it'll be going through a number of different committees, as well as the public, before we finalize it.
Good. Staff, Leah?
Yeah.
Anything that you want to, we talked a lot about the website tonight.
On the, on the topic of the website, we have a trainer from Civic Plus here. We started training today, and he'll be here through Thursday. So we have staff cycling in and out for four days doing training on the website this week.
And?
And so far, the consensus is that the backend of the website is very user-friendly. It's very intuitive to use. So, you know, we've just, just started the first day of training, but that's the consensus so far.
Pat?
Nothing.
I also want to thank you. I see I got, by doing strategic plan tonight, Pat's review is done, because I now have his objectives for next year in place.
Solar panels.
Page document.
What's up with the solar panels?
Solar panels since the last meeting. This is a unique installation, which we knew from the get-go because of the energy wrecks involved. We had myself, staff, and the city attorney met with the CEO and commensurate staff with MG&E last week. I thought it was a very positive, good meeting. They got their, they got their issues out, and it's just because this is unique, this isn't like the other 100 that they've gone through, that they really want to be cautious. And we made it clear from our point about the importance in meeting our 2015.
2020.
20, 25 by 25 goals, and that this is critical, and that we have also budgeted. So I feel there's a monetary risk going on here that I'm concerned about. So it ended, I think, in a warm, positive, but we're promised to have our answer back from them in terms of the joint hookup this week. And I had that confirmed Thursday in talking to their attorney, that she assured me that the answer would be, and I'm having lunch with their PR director Friday, so I said, I want this to be a celebratory lunch, and he said, so does he, so, yeah, devil's in the details. But hopefully, the city site, city hall, and the library are ready. They've been tested and signed off on, so it's truly just having somebody from the utility come to make sure that we did everything right to flip that switch. I don't know how the wellhouse is doing. I think that's still, they're both to be, the other two public works and the wellhouse are to be completed by calendar year end. So I would hope, and we'll get out announcements to you right away on that. Just a couple things. We had our first tree lighting gazebo Thursday night. It was cold, bitterly cold, but it was wonderfully attended, about 35 people. And I want to extend a thank you to the tree farm that was renting Ahuska Park, donated a very nice tree. And I want to thank Missy and Jake for taking the time and the effort to put 1,000 LED lights, and as you drive out tonight, please take a look at it. Fairway Glen ribbon cutting was last week. 75% of the units are rented. They are thrilled, and as public works, or public plan commission, excuse me, members know, Encore has been retained by the owner of the property across from Buckeye, and they like to do another major project. So that is in early phases of going to plan commission. And so it's truly, I hate to overuse it, but if you build it, they will come. We now have three brand-new buildings on Manona Drive in process or completed, so all's going well there.
Are those new bus stops?
I think that was one of the metrics, and .7ZD on page nine. So, and then the other good news, Andy sent this out today, our radio station, the Manona radio station. This is huge, having come from this industry. FCC has accepted our license request, and now it goes to, there's a, is it 90 days, Andy? A 90-day, yeah, typically, historically, it's been a 90-day period for comment. And comment usually is negative, that if somebody wanted that license, we're competing, or we would be infringing, none of which I'm aware of any engineering thing. So I think we're gonna be a radio station owner here much sooner than I thought. So that's all I have, except, I don't know about the rest of you, but the last meeting, I was so proud of the work that this council did and the effort put forth to bring forth a budget. We all got our tax bills, and I mentioned to the city administrator this evening that I, as the mayor, you know, we use these examples of what might happen with the tax bill that shows up. My tax bill showed up, and much to my surprise, the city portion of that tax bill was an $11 increase. $11. I, it was almost like it didn't exist. You know, it was like. There wasn't a tax increase to me. My wife was thrilled. I called my kids. It was a great moment at the Miller household. So again, thank you so much for that support, and I think the community would have felt similarly, but the community looks to a third party, you know, the ear, the public, to make sure that what politicians say and do is always misconstrued. So the community, I was waiting for my phone to be ringing off the hook with thank you, thank you, and I'm sure you were too, but all I got was, when the community received their subscription, their copy of the newspaper last week, as I've been sitting here daily staring at this headline, "Manona Sees Increase in City Taxes." So everyone was already complaining to the mayor about. So, everyone was already complaining to the mayor, but, there you go, big spenders, everything, so, had they went into the body the copy, they would have seen there was a miniscule city tax increase, but no, people read headlines. So, Gina, could you join me at that? So, I had, I, I took this seriously, it hurt, so I contacted the editor of the newspaper to see what happened, and the line I was given was-
The first new-
I don't like writing headlines. It was just shrugged off. So, the council, we had a special session of the council, and for the viewers who never get to see, this is Gina Cavelli, soon-to-be-retired editor of the Herald Independent. So, we convened and worked on a headline workshop for you. So, we would like to share a little going-away present, as this is your last meeting of the city council, and Andy, can you put up the projector again, please? Not sure how this works. Just put it in. All right, so, here is, so, this is what happened. Editor has had enough of Manona, Manona raises taxes, so Cavelli decides to leave $11. But, okay, you take it serious, but with the exception, Alder Thomas had an engagement earlier, but your favorite city council and staff want to leave you with a little going-away thank you, but, as you said, you don't like doing, um, headlines, we thought, just in case you ever need some spare headlines-
Okay.
-here were some runners-up. Editor leaves Manona, what should, what should she do without us? Manona proves too much to be too much for the editor. Editor does, this is true, leaves the best city in the state of Wisconsin. Manona burns out, editor Cavelli. Editor finally learns how to spill win, spell winiclock, now she knows it's time to leave. City council meetings drive Cavelli to leave? True stories, I have a feeling. Manona taxes too much for her, and editor leaves Manona for a normal life. So, I think on behalf of all my colleagues in the council and city staff, I congratulate you on your wonderful-
Thank you.
... appointment to return to your alma mater. Do you have any words to say?
Um, I, I don't know, I don't really talk much. I don't know, but it's, it's really been a pleasure and, and an honor to be a part of Manona for the last two and a half years, especially the past year with the 75th, and to, uh, to really be a part of that was really special for me, and, um, no, I just want to thank all of you, you made my job easy, so-
Thank you.
It was, you know, Manona's a great place, and I really, I will miss it a little bit. Taxes, but, you know. I will miss it.
And with that, is there a motion for adjournment?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Here.
Here you go. See you.